Good evening and welcome to this evening's March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four City Council meeting. We are hereby called to order, please join and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me. Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Here.
Bud Matts.
President.
O'Brien.
Here.
Beniziano.
Here.
Boucher.
Here.
Reyes.
Here.
Kohler.
Here.
With seven present and none absent, there is a quorum. First order of business this evening is to approve minutes from a previous meeting and March twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four City Council meeting. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you Alderman Kohler for the first and Alderman McHale for the second. Are there any corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Seeing none, the question is, shall the minutes be approved? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
The ayes have it and those minute, meeting minutes are approved. The next item that we have before us is a presentation regarding the Police ILEEP Accreditation Award. And to that, we will defer to Chief John Nowacki.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Today is really an honor. One of the main things I wanted to accomplish when I started here and rolling out to become an accredited agency. It took us a couple of years to do that. And at this point, we are getting re-accredited. So at this point, I'd like to call up Chief Steve Cass Stevens, a recently retired from Buffalo Grove Police Department. He's also a member of Illinois Associations of Chief of Police. And I'd like, if I can have all the officers come up here, because this was not just an individual effort, this was actually a team effort. Accreditation is a very long process for those that don't know. We have to prove that our policies and our procedures meet industry standards and we excel in everything we do. And like I said, part of that was to ride along everything, so this really was a team process. I'd like to have everybody up there with me. And then at this point, I will turn it over to Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Chief, chief. It's great to see so many of the members of the department here, because you are right, Chief, it's a team effort. It's not just one person assigned to a task that makes this happen. As the Chief said, I'm former chief, retired from Buffalo Grove after forty-six years on the job. I am a past president of the Illinois Chiefs of Police, as well as the International Chiefs of Police. I currently serve as a parliamentarian for Illinois Chiefs, which is why I'm here making this presentation on behalf of the Association. Early in the twenty-first century, the Illinois Chiefs looked for a way to help local law enforcement agencies demonstrate that they have achieved the highest standards in policing. And that led the Association to create the ILEEP program, the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. For ILEEP, we partnered with several major organizations in the state, including the Illinois City County Management Association, Illinois Criminal Justice Information Authority, Northwestern University Center for Public Safety, the Intergovernmental Risk Management Association, the Training and Standards Boards, and they are all part of the ILEEP Accreditation Council. We are the Illinois Accreditation Authority for the state. So today, I'm here to congratulate the Rolling Meadows Police Department for their re-accreditation. They were originally accredited in two thousand and nineteen. And it's important for us as a statewide association to publicly recognize departments who continue to do everything possible to embrace best practices in policing. ILEEP's a program designed to be an administrative bulletproof vest, if you will. The administrative armor is designed to reduce risk and liability and to serve as a catalyst for professionalism in the industry. The ILEEP program aims to make police organizations better by evaluating all their policies, their procedures against established criteria of best practices. Coupling the alignment of policy and written directive against these best practices is the process of having those criteria certified by an independent authoritative body, being the ILEEP Accreditation Council. And the accreditation is significant, obviously, for the agency, for your community and residents, and for all of us in Illinois who are pushing for higher levels of police professionalism. Rolling Meadows has achieved Tier One, which means they met or exceeded sixty-nine important standards. We reviewed all their policies and procedures in the context of these standards, looking specifically at four areas of administration, training, operations, and personnel. We utilized professional assessors to look at critical policies as well, including use of force, pursuit, record-keeping, and community policing efforts. To achieve accreditation, or in this case, re-accreditation, is a rigorous process, as the Chief and his staff will tell you. For a department to demonstrate its compliance with these standards, it takes many months of documentation. So I congratulate the Chief and his staff on this accomplishment. Only sixty-one Illinois agencies have achieved ILEEP accreditation since the program was launched more than twelve years ago. There are well over nine hundred agencies in the state. So that puts you in very, very good company. You can be sure that you have a professional department that is up to date with its policies and procedures. And the Illinois Chiefs are very proud of Chief Nowacki and the members of the Police Department for this accomplishment. And we believe all of you should be as well.
We get a name stop up here for our real quick photo?
The Illinois Chiefs has a very good media team. This will be out probably by seven AM tomorrow morning. On their LinkedIn page and all their social media.
I do have just one more word to give, if that's okay, Mayor, it's actually to Sergeant Manfredi. I was the accreditation manager for many, many years, the very top job. I turned everything over to Sergeant Manfredi, so he was in charge of this re-accreditation. It's actually a couple of years' worth of work to do, pulling policies, proofs, and everything like that. So I do have an exceptional police duty award I want to give him. So on behalf of the Rolling Meadows Police Department, thank you for all the hard work he did and being an important part of this re-accreditation. So thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Nowacki, and thank you, everyone, for being here this evening for all of your hard work. And we appreciate the acknowledgement of what many in the community have already experienced here, that our policing is one of the top in the state and is an excellent opportunity to see how community policing should be executed within the city of Rolling Meadows and within the state. So thank you again, a round of applause.
Thank you again. And we will now move on to a public hearing regarding amending the city's electrical plan of operation and governance, which is almost as exciting. So the City Council is scheduled to hold a public hearing regarding amending the city of Rolling Meadows Plan of Operation and Governance for its Electricity Aggregation Program. The purpose of this hearing is to invite oral comments from interested citizens concerning amending the city of Rolling Meadows Plan of Operation and Governance for its Electricity Aggregation Program. Let the record show that the public hearing opened at seven ten PM on March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding amending the city of Rolling Meadows Plan of Operation and Governance for its Electricity Aggregation Program? And I'll ask again, is there anyone that wishes to speak regarding amending the city of Rolling Meadows Plan of Operation and Governance for its Electricity Aggregation Program? And then I'll ask a third time if there's anyone here this evening who wishes to speak amending the city of Rolling Meadows Plan of Operation and Governance for its Electricity Aggregation Program? Very well. Let the record show that the public hearing closed at seven eleven PM on March twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-four. And then at this time, to accommodate members of the Veterans Committee that are here in person tonight, I will now move the Mayor's appointment, appointments in the agenda up at this time. Additionally, we will be reviewing the Board of Trustees Fire Pension Fund appointee for Kevin Meadows and the Veterans Committee appointee for Peter Stevenson. In addition to the two appointments previously announced, I am also asking the Council to approve my appointments of alderpersons McHale and Reyes to act as council liaisons and members of the Steering Committee for the Kirchhoff Road Corridor Plan along the Planning and Zoning Commission. Does any alderperson wish to remove an appointee from the list for discussion? Okay. Seeing none, the question is, shall the appointments be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, those appointments are unanimously approved. At this ti, oh, did we need a motion for that?
Yes, we did, didn't we?
Well, since technically you are the appointing authority and the members of the Council give their consent, it's appropriate that their yeses here are sufficient consent on the record for those appointees. So it's okay.
Thank you, Attorney Wolf. I was gonna say, we can appoint you again this evening if that were to satisfy that. So those appointments then are officially approved at this time. Thank you very much, Councilmembers, for that unanimous approval. At this time, there would typically be a Mayor's Report, but there is no Mayor's Report this evening. Are there any ward reports? All right. Seeing none, at this time, the meeting is open to the public for twenty minutes. And in order to secure the rights of the citizens of the city to a fair and just representation before their elected officials and to guarantee to the elected officials an order and dignified forum in which to conduct the city's business, no person shall be allowed to engage in any activity that will disturb or disrupt the orderly proceedings of the City Council. Per rules of procedure, the public is to address the City Council, and the fact that no member of the City Council responds does not mean that the City Council or any member thereof agrees or disagrees with the comment. In order to attain this objective, the following rules of conduct are hereby established. Any person who seeks to address the City Council at this time for public comments shall be permitted to speak only upon recognition of the presiding officer, and such person shall adhere to the following provisions. That each person addressing the City Council shall state their name for the record. Each person shall be granted no more than five minutes of the allotted twenty minutes in order to address the City Council. Questions and/or commentary shall be limited to city business. And comments supporting or opposing a nominated person's candidacy for elective office of the city shall be out of order. Commentary shall be directed to the presiding officer unless the presiding officer permits the individual to address the council members or other city officers present. Discussion shall take place in a professional manner, which displays mutual respect, and profanity shall not be used in any manner. So with that, we have several individuals on the sign-in sheet, however, it looks like the first is Ms. Roxanne. If you wanna come to the podium?
I would like permission to, to make a comment to everybody. Is that equated?
Yep, you, you have five minutes, go ahead.
I want to say, thank you all. Thank you all for serving our city. Thank you all for helping us. It was so much appreciated, and it's a tough job you've got. So thank you so much. Okay, now, to, to business. Weber Drive, I know we're doing, oh, New Wilkie repainting. But I use Weber Drive a lot, and I guess I never knew this before. It's South, South Old Wilkie Road. Also, it's got two names. It's terrible, it needs, it needs some work. It's very mumpy and a lot of potholes and this and that. So I would like to know if there is a plan for, for resurfacing that road from Central to Algonquin. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on the list is Mr. Dale.
Evening. There's just a couple of things that I wanted to say. And you guys don't have to, you know, answer the questions that I'm about to ask. But I noticed on our water bills this month, we got a, a, an increase in our garbage, our water, and our sewer rates. And I just wanna let everybody know, if you're a senior, I don't know if you guys might have already mentioned it at one of your other meetings, that if you're senior over sixty-five, you're allowed to come to the City Hall, get an application, and get a ten percent off your garbage bill. So that I wanted to let know. But before we get all warm and cozy about ten percent off your garbage bill, we raised our water access fee two hundred percent. And our sewer access, two hundred percent. So I just wanna let that know. And then, as far as taxes, our city, my city portion of my real estate taxes went up sixteen percent. Just for Rolling Meadows. That's outside of what Crepe County, up to everything else. But what bothers me is that sixteen percent increase for Rolling Meadows, that's on top of taxes that we put on our phone bills, our electric bills, our gas bills, and every other utility or thing that we use that you guys tax on. Which, if that's what we have to pay, that's what we have to pay. But then I was reading the paper this week and talked to some of my neighbors. I'm in the sixth ward. And they were concerned about the, the bonus that, that the Council had recently given to our city manager. I don't know the city manager. I, I know the last city manager we had. This is a town of twenty thousand people. It's not, you know, they say we wanna get in line with all the other towns. Well, we don't have seventy thousand, ninety thousand, over a hundred thousand, like some of the surrounding towns we have. And I believe that the city manager gets a fair wage, a fair salary. And as a resident, I'm expecting him to reach for goals and find new goals, just like the police chief, fire chief. They have their goals, we, we pay them. And I just kinda find it, and some of my neighbors do also, twenty-five thousand dollars is a lot of money. Besides giving them a five percent raise this year and next. Now, police chief, fire chief, public works director, they all set goals when we pay them their wage. I'm not saying that city manager shouldn't get a raise like everybody else, but the rest of them don't get a bonus. I mean, firefighters, police officers, put their lives on the line every single day, and we pay them, and they get a fair wage. So I feel the same thing, along with a lot of my neighbors, that the city manager and the rest of them, they get a wage, you know? If the city, I'm sure the city pays them. So to me, I feel like they're doing their job. If they're not doing their job, then we don't need them. So, but it'll be a lot of public works employees that do hell of a job, snow removal, garbage removal, all the other jobs that they do, and we pay them. Where are all of their bonuses? So I just feel that bonuses are given out a little bit too, too easy. I know some of your council members are new, I mean, to me, because I haven't been to a lot of council meetings lately. But this one here just kinda hit a nerve, and I figured that I'd have to come along with some of my neighbors.
Mr. Dale, you have twenty seconds.
And so that's, that's what I wanted to bring up. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. At this time, we'll move forward with our pending items, starting with Item A. Ordinance number twenty-four dash zero nine to authorize the execution of a communications water tower lease agreement between T-Mobile Central LLC and the city of Rolling Meadows, Illinois, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first, and thank you Alderman McHale for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. This brings us to Item B, ordinance number twenty-four dash one zero, to amend the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Kohler for the first.
Second.
Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Item C, ordinance number twenty-four dash one one, to modify the city's zoning ordinance to authorize adult-use cannabis transporting organizations as a special use in certain zoning districts in for second reading. For the Council's information, we do have a representative for this item here tonight if the Council has additional questions or discussions on this item. With that said, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance? Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first.
Second.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? All right. Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. For Item D, ordinance number twenty-four dash one two, to grant a special use permit and amend the, and restate prior special use permits and variations for thirty-seven, thirty-seven, and thirty-eight, thirty-one Industrial Avenue, Mullen Motors Building Body Builders Automotive Incorporated, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman McHale for the first.
Second.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. For Item E, ordinance number twenty-four dash one three, to grant a special use for a pet daycare at fifty-one hundred Newport Drive, a doggy gym and swim, in for second reading. Is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman Boucher for the first.
Second.
Alderman Reyes for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the ordinance be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance is adopted. Next item on the agenda are our consent ordinances in for first reading. Consists of three items, Items F through H. For the Council's information, we have a representative regarding Item F if any council member wishes to engage in additional questions or discussion on that item. With that said, does any alderperson wish to remove any other item from the consent agenda for ordinances? Yes, Alderman Kohler.
Item G, please.
Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda this evening? Okay. Seeing none, the Chair declares it in order for one motion to consider the two ordinances in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you Alderman O'Brien for the first.
Second.
And Alderman McHale for the second. These items consist of Item F, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero zero, to amend the city code in order to increase the number of Class A-two liquor licenses issued in the city of Rolling Meadows, doing business, Sushi Edo Incorporated, doing business as Sushi Edo at sixteen seventy-three Algonquin Road, in for first reading. And Item H, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero zero, to amend Division Five Single Family Residential Drainage Improvement Program of Article Three Sewers and Sewage Disposal of Chapter One Ten Utilities, in for first reading. The question is, shall the ordinances be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Bud Matts.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, these ordinances will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us to Item G, ordinance number twenty-four dash zero zero, to reserve and authorize the transfer of volume cap in connection with private activity bond issues and related matters for calendar year. bond issues and related matters for calendar year twenty-twenty-four in for first reading. Is there a motion to consider this item?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first.
Second.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Alderman Kohler, you had pulled this for consideration, so you have the first comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure how I will vote to move this forward. I think I probably will move it forward to the second reading, but I'd like the city attorney to please explain a little bit about what this is about.
Certainly.
Sure, thank you. This is an ordinance that has to be passed by the city on an annual basis by May one of each year. It basically falls under certain regulations, under the Internal Revenue Code and the Private Activity Bond Act, which is a law in Illinois. And what this does is allow the city to allocate a volume cap based on a calculation that's established by the Internal Revenue Code on population. So a hundred and twenty-five doll, a hundred and twenty-five dollars per resident of the city can be allocated and reserved toward the issuance of private activity bonds for the city. The Private Activity Bond Act also allows, in addition to the reservation of those funds, the transfer of those funds to other units of government for private activity bond purposes as well. So this ordinance allows, it basically essentially reserves that volume cap for the city so that the city may reserve it and eventually use it if necessary for tax-exempt private activity bond purposes. And you have to do this by May one of every year in order to do that.
Yes, continue.
So this is kind of there in case we need it, but we have no anticipation? Do we have an anticipation when we use it?
It is in case, so you're reserving it right now. And then any use of those funds would be established by a written instrument and either signed by the manager or the mayor, and most likely anything would come before the council again at that time.
Do you know if we've used this in the past?
I know we've passed this ordinance every year, but I'm not certain if we've used the reserved volume cap.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for discussion? All right. Seeing none, the question is, shall this ordinance be moved forward for second reading? Will the clerk please call the roll?
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, this ordinance will be moved forward for second reading. This brings us to new business, and we have item I, which is a motion to approve a payment of bills on warrant for March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. Is there a motion to approve the warrant?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman Boucher for the first, and Alderman Kohler for the second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the question is, shall the warrant be approved? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Budmats.
Yes.
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the warrant is approved. The next item on the agenda are the consent resolutions, which consist of nine items, items J through R. Does any alderperson wish to remove any item from the consent agenda for resolutions? Seeing none, the chair declares it in order for one motion to consist, to consider the nine resolutions in one motion without debate. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Alderman McHale for the first.
Second.
And Alderman O'Brien for the second. Item J, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash thirty-two, to award a contract for the purchase of Genesis Rescue Systems Extraction Equipment and Batteries. Item K, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash thirty-three, to approve renewal contract for Canon Copier Lease Agreement. Item L, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash thirty-four, to approve and publish the twenty-twenty-three zoning map. Item M, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash thirty-five, to approve an agreement with GovTemp USA, a division of MGT of America Consulting LLC for the interim deputy director of community development. Item N, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash thirty-six, to approve an agreement with GovTemp USA, a division of MGT of America Consulting LLC for human resources. Item O, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash thirty-seven, to adopt a debt management policy for the city of Rolling Meadows. Item P, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash thirty-eight, to award a contract for twenty-twenty-four resurfacing observation engineering services to Christopher B. Burke Engineering in a not-to-exceed amount of seventy-eight thousand five hundred and forty-six dollars and no cents. Item Q, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash thirty-nine, to award the twenty-twenty-four road resurfacing project to Builders Paving LLC in an amount of one million two hundred and ninety-seven thousand eight hundred dollars and no cents. And item R, resolution number twenty-four dash R dash forty, to approve the creation of an emergency financial assistance program administered by the city of Rolling Meadows. The question is, shall the resolutions be adopted? Will the clerk please call the roll?
O'Brien.
Yes.
Beniziano.
Yes.
Boucher.
Yes.
Reyes.
Yes.
Kohler.
Yes.
McHale.
Yes.
Budmats.
Yes.
With seven in favor and none opposed, the resolutions are adopted. This brings us to other business and reports. We have no mayoral proclamations and have already done mayoral appointments, and there's no city clerks' report this evening, which brings us to our city staff reports. As a reminder, there are no discussions on staff reports. For our community items of interest, we'll defer to Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. I have three community items of interest for you this evening. The first is that the city is embarking on a rebranding initiative for a fresh new look. We appreciate your input, the public's input. We ask that you help us to shape the future of Rolling Meadows by completing a brief survey. That can be found on the city's website at citirm.org, on the city's Facebook page, and also at city hall, and some of our area restaurants have partnered with us to help get responses for this survey. Second, the Rolling Meadows Police Department will be participating in the distracted driving campaign during the month of April, which will place a major focus on cell phone usage while driving. Don't use this behind the wheel. Police officers will be working to increase awareness of these dangers and encourage all motorists to put away their phones and give driving their full attention. Finally, third, calling all veterans who are interested in riding or walking in the upcoming Rolling Meadows parades for Memorial Day on May twenty-fifth or on the Fourth of July. Join your fellow service members to walk or ride in an impressive white trolley, which has been reserved for both dates. To sign up, contact Lori Ciezak at eight four seven eight seven zero nine zero zero five, or Ciezak, C-I-E-Z-A-K-L, at citirm.org.
Thank you very much. Our next item is the January twenty-twenty-four financial report. However, the financial report is in the agenda packet, and therefore, if any council or member of the public has questions, please contact Finance Director Molly Talkington, and we'd be happy to go through that with you. Our last item for our city staff reports is the April ninth, twenty-twenty-four city council draft agenda, and for that, I will defer to city Assistant City Manager Glenn Cole.
Certainly. The draft agenda is included in your agenda packet, just like it says. The agenda's a draft. It's subject to change prior to its posting. When the draft, when the agenda's finalized, it'll be posted in advance of the meeting in accordance with the open meetings act. Madam Mayor, I would also have one additional item for you for the city council this evening.
Of course.
So the city is, and as a member of NYMEC, the Northern Illinois Municipal Electric Collaborative, that group helps facilitate the city's electrical aggregation program, which we talked about earlier this evening. We also use that group to help solicit competitive bids for the city's own electrical usage. So our primary facilities, like city hall, typically are provided with power through comment or a different arrangement, but when it comes to places, things like our lift stations, our water pumps, street lighting, those are things that the city has to pay for on the open market, and it's often more efficient to purchase those from an alternative supplier through group bidding. The annual group bid that NYMEC operates runs today, and the city obtained very favorable rates. It's a discount from today's pricing, and it's the lowest in our group. These bids are time-sensitive because the electric market moves pretty quick, so the bids expire tomorrow. In the past, the city manager's been delegated the authority by resolution to execute the low bid, knowing that the scheduling doesn't allow us to time it for an agenda and get us in front of you. We learned today that authority lapsed recently. So unless there's an objection, we're planning to sign this agreement tomorrow. That'll come back to the city council for ratification at your next meeting.
Thank you very much, Assistant City Manager Cole. And then for the council, we are now moving on to matters not on the agenda. So if there are any questions regarding that item, please feel free to ask at this time. Otherwise, it sounds like this will come before the council for consideration at the following city council meeting. Yes, Alderman Boucher.
Not about the electric, but just to keep you all up to date, the library did just have interviews for a new director. Those concluded last week. They went very well. An offer was made to a candidate. A final announcement of that candidate will be at their April meeting, that Ms. Alderman Budmats is nicely going to for us in April. Overall, the board was really excited about their just choice, so hopefully it'll be a good decision for the library going forward.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that good news. Are there any other matters not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, just looking for a motion to adjourn. Thank you, Alderman Kohler for the first. And the second for Alderman McHale. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and this meeting is adjourned at seven thirty, seven thirty-six PM.